This meeting of the Gadsden City Council will now come to order. The Chair calls on City Clerk Iva Nelson for the roll call.
Councilwoman Toles?
Here.
Councilwoman Williams?
Here.
Worthy?
Here.
Eccles?
Here.
Billingsley?
Here.
Cannon?
Here.
And Reed?
Here.
We have a quorum present and our meeting is open for business. I'm going to ask Councilwoman Toles to lead the invocation. Please stand and remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Dear Heavenly Father, as we compose our hearts today, we thank you for this day. Even though it's cloudy outside, it's a good day. Father, we pray for our nation, we pray for our state, and most of all, we pray for our city. Father, we pray that you will give us wisdom and knowledge to transact business as you would have us to do. And we just give you all the praise and all the glory and thank you for life. In Jesus' name I pray, amen.
Amen. Our pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The Chair will entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the work session and City Council meeting held on November 24th.
So moved. Checking.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to approve minutes.
The Chair will entertain a motion to ratify payment of accounts for the week of November 20th through the 25th.
So moved. Checking.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to ratify payment of the accounts.
Proclamations, ma'am. Okay. Unfinished business, we have none today. This is the time and place, as advertised, to conduct a public hearing allowing anyone to speak in opposition to or in favor of a resolution ordering abatement of nuisances on property located at 2525 Ewing Avenue in District 2, Terry L. Hall and Win South Credit Union being the last known owners. Is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition to this resolution? Does anyone wish to speak in favor?
Mr. President, I'm Brian Harbison with the Building Department. This case involves an accessory building. We started our process in November of 2010. There've been no improvements. There was a demolition permit taken out about a week ago, and I told the owner that we would honor that demolition permit. It's good for 30 days, but I'm asking the Council today to pass a resolution to abate the nuisance. Thank you.
What is the pleasure of the Council?
I move to abate the nuisance.
Second.
Okay. Is there any discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Our next public hearing is a resolution ordering abatement of nuisance on property at 1108 Grant Avenue in District 2, the State of Alabama, Terry Helms, Buford Wooton, and Laritha M. Boggs being the last known owners. Is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition to this resolution? Does anyone wish to speak in favor?
Mr. President, we started this case in October, I'm sorry, December of 2012. There've been no improvements. There are no permits to improve, and we're asking today for resolutions to abate this nuisance.
I move to abate the nuisance.
Second.
Okay. Is there any discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Our next public hearings address items number 11 through 13. These are resolutions ordering abatement of nuisances on property at 322, 324, and 326 Hope Street in District 2, Paul L. Ridgway being the last known owner. Is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition to these resolutions? If you would, sir, just give your name and address, please.
My name is Myron Allenstein. I represent Ann Ridgway, who is the owner of the property and also my office manager. And we're asking for more time. Her and her husband own this property. It's formerly Ridgway Printing, a very well-known business in the community. This is not a situation of an absentee landlord. It's not a situation of abandoned property. Yes, it needs some repairs. There was some confusion. There was an issue two years ago, as I understand, and my client thought that issue was resolved. And she got a notice two weeks ago that apparently it hadn't been resolved. And so she's come up with a, and I've given a letter to all the Council members. I think you should have received a letter. And she's got three options. You know, she might decide to tear it down, but she needs more time. It's Christmas. She works full-time. She's a mother. She's a grandmother. Again, she's here. She's taking responsibility for the property. In her mind, she's got three options. One is to fix everything that needs to be fixed. Option two is to take down part of the building, and three is to take down the whole building. It's Christmas time, and it's just hard for a full-time employee to make these important decisions on short notice. And so we're asking, just give us six months and let her make some decisions. I'd like for her to speak just shortly, just briefly, too.
Ma'am, if you would, please do likewise. Your name and address, please.
My name is Ann Ridgway. My current address is 60 Bryce Drive, Gadsden, Alabama, 35904. Good morning, ladies and gentlemen. This has caught me unawares. I'm sorry. Like Mr. Allenstein said, I'd really like some more time. My husband and I are seriously discussing raising the property, but finances are a problem with that. I'm the only person that works in our family. I support our family, and I understand that it's going to be several thousand dollars to take the building down. I need a little time to be able to raise that kind of capital. And if the building, in your opinion, is not in a dire situation, and I don't think it is, I would be more than willing, once it gets a little warmer outside and we're past the holidays, I could do some painting, like I said in my letter, replace the broken windows, spruce it up a little bit, make it a little prettier for the city. Thank you.
I'd like to add that Ms. Ridgway, she works full-time at my office, and she works long hours and does a great job. She's a very responsible person.
Thank you. Does anyone else wish to speak in opposition? Does anyone wish to speak in favor?
Mr. President, we filed this case in November of 2013. There was a building permit taken out in February of 2014 by Ms. Ridgway. There were some issues with the front facade brick wall at the top of this building that runs parallel with Hope Street, which sits immediately upon a public sidewalk and just six feet away from a public street, a very public street, by the way. And I worked with, I believe it's Ms. Ridgway's son initially, to take some of the most hazardous portion of that facade wall, which in our opinion today is still in danger of collapse. You can see evidence where it has pulled away from the wall. And we're asking for a resolution to abate the nuisance. Thank you.
Does anyone else wish to speak in favor?
I move to, I guess to help Ms. Ridgway out, I move to abate it. And I go up and down that street all the time. I live up in that area. I know it's not in my district. And I understand your dilemma, but for safety reasons and because of where it's located, then, you know, if there's something change in your situation, that's fine, but I'm going to move to abate.
Second.
Okay. Is there any?
Can I say something? Ms. Ridgway, we have a program through Mr. Harbison where he'll let you make payments on it if you need to, and they're very affordable. You might want to get with him after the vote and after the meeting and talk with him about it, but he's got a program he does. He makes, you know, the payments really cheap and affordable to somebody when they abate the nuisance. Right. If you just want to talk with him after this is over with, he can explain all that to you.
I think it's over a three-year period to get you to pay it.
Yeah. And we appreciate, because I was at a school, and I know the city has done business with your company, so we appreciate what you've done for the city and the things, but, you know, for safety reasons and because, you know, it'd be different, and it's not a personal thing, not a personal thing with the city, but it's just something that needs to be done at this time. So just wanted to let you know, you all have been very good to the city as far as doing business, and we do appreciate it.
Definitely not a reflection of your intent, so we definitely appreciate you. So we have a motion and a second to abate the nuisance. Is there any discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Our next public hearing is a resolution ordering abatement of nuisance on property at 1525 Cansler Avenue in District 3, the State of Alabama being the last known owner. Is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition to this resolution? Does anyone wish to speak in favor?
Mr. President, this case involves building remains where a property owner took the house down several years ago and just left the remains. And unfortunately, it's grown up where it's hardly visible. You can see in the pictures, in this ravine. We started a building remains case in October of this year and actually attempted to go to court unsuccessfully. We're asking for a resolution today to abate this nuisance so public work can go in and remove this debris. Thank you.
What is the pleasure of the Council?
Move to abate.
Second.
Okay. Is there any additional discussion?
Yes, I've got complaints from the community. I went out and looked at the property, called Brian out, and he came out and inspected property. And so I want to say thank you to him for getting on this, and we would like to move to abate it.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Our next public hearing is a resolution ordering abatement of nuisance on property at 1811 Adams Street in District 5, James Janes being the last known owner. Is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition to this resolution? Does anyone wish to speak in favor?
Mr. President, we started this case in November of 2012. There've been no improvements. There are no permits to improve, and we're asking for a resolution to abate this nuisance.
I move to abate the nuisance.
Second.
Okay. Is there any discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Our next public hearing is a resolution ordering abatement of nuisance on property at 1606 McKinley Street in District 5, Haley Layfield being the last known owner. Is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition to this resolution? Does anyone wish to speak in favor? What is the pleasure of the Council?
I'm sorry. I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Blowing by you, Brian. Thank you for giving me the opportunity, Mr. President. We started this case in April 2012. There've been no improvements. There were two building permits taken out during this process, but nothing has been done. It's one of the cases where outside of the house looks fine till you get on the inside, and it's horribly deteriorated. The owner has stripped out a lot of the interior material, but nothing has been done in the last couple of years, so we're asking for a resolution to abate this nuisance. Thank you.
Is there anyone else?
You said the owner has taken his stuff out of this house?
Through a couple of building permits, the latest one being about 28 months ago. Did a little bit of work to the interior, but just has abandoned it.
Okay.
And the neighbors are complaining about insects, rodents, and things, so.
Is this one we could rehab?
It's not likely because of the condition of the inside, and that plays a large part in the, plus the appraisal rate was not very favorable to the property owner. But we'll look at it, and if we could, we will.
Yeah, we have to spend a little more on it. Be all right with me. The outside looks fine. It's a brick house.
Yeah.
Looked like it's got a new metal roof on it. And one thing, we can't go by the appraisal, because all these houses in this area, these areas are, were not appraised or whatever. So I know how the banks appraise things, so I'm like him. I think we need to spend a little more time on the ones that are feasible to fix, we fix, because we're just tearing down too many houses that we don't, we're not replacing.
What is the pleasure of the Council?
I move to abate.
Second.
Okay. Is there any additional discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Our next public hearing is a resolution ordering abatement of nuisance on property at 2333 Forest Avenue in District 6, HPW Specialties, Inc., and South Trust Bank being the last known owners. Is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition to this resolution? Sir, if you would, please give your name and address, please.
Mike Turner, hard owner of HPW Specialties. This property has obviously been vacant for quite a while, and I think about two years ago, Mr. Harbison sent me a letter, and we boarded it up, painted it, tried to make it presentable. We haven't done anything to it. I did, after I got the letter, go by. I can probably see why he sent me the letter. I mean, it wasn't that bad, but it does need, somebody tore a board down, busted a window out, and, but I'd like to ask for at least six more months' time, because it is a corner lot, the structure's sound, it does need repairing or remodeling. But in the next six months, I think we could either restore the building, sell it to a local person who's interested in the building, and it could be revitalized at this time. If that doesn't work out in six months, then I would say, yeah, tear it down. Clean a lot. At this time, I have been letting Wayth Cross, which is next door, they've used my parking now for the last two years. I voluntarily let them use it, trying to be a good neighbor. But there are a few things to it that's going to have to be done. There's a few window or two that need to be boarded up and painted to keep it, you know, looking good. But it's still, I think, a viable building that could be used, you know, now. Give me six months. If we don't do anything, then I would agree to do whatever, okay? So I asked you if you could give me six more months. I would appreciate it.
Thank you, sir. Does anyone else wish to speak in opposition? Does anyone wish to speak in favor?
Mr. President, this case does involve commercial building. We started our process in March of 2012. Been no improvements other than some boarding up and some painting on the exterior. There was a building permit taken out in March of 2012. We're asking today for a resolution to abate the nuisance.
While they're going around looking at this, I didn't know you're on the business down the street, and you pass by there all the time, I assume, and you seen how bad the building is. I'm going to make a motion that we abate the nuisance, but we won't tear that building down tomorrow, so that's going to give you some time. If you're really serious about fixing it, get with Mr. Harbison, and it won't be six months. I'm telling you, when I abate this nuisance, he can tell you about how long it'll be, but if you've got time to get that thing back up and get with Mr. Harbison. But I'm going to abate that nuisance, because it's been going on so long right there in that corner, and I think you'll agree with me. You come by there every day, and you see how bad that looks.
I do. The only thing that bothers me about that is when I look at the area, and I look, my building looks better than my office building right now. And I don't understand why you have to zero in on things like, you know, for those areas. I think I don't know.
I couldn't answer that question. Have to ask Mr. Harbison that. I know that the windows have been broken out for a while, and, you know, basically what happens when a building's left unattended like that, and the windows are busted out, people goes in it and sleeps at night, and eventually somebody's going to set it on fire. If you're lucky, they won't, but they're going to set it on fire. People's going to do, go in and drug, do drug activity, and we've got the police department having to go out there, you know? And, you know, like I said, I mean, you're a good, you're a good citizen of Gadsden. You've got a good business down there, and we appreciate everything you do in that area. But, you know, we've got to make some kind of effort to get this thing over with. I'm going to go and abate the nuisance, and you can get with him, and he'll tell you about how long you got to do something. I make a move to abate the nuisance, please.
Second.
Does anyone wish to speak in favor? Have you already spoken? All right. So we have a motion, we have a motion to abate the nuisance and a second. Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Our next public hearing is a resolution ordering abatement of nuisance on property at 405 Van Cortlandt Street in District 6, Sam Arnold being the last known owner. Is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition? Does anyone wish to speak in favor of this resolution?
Mr. President, this case involves an abandoned vehicle and trash and debris covering some property in the Walnut Park area. We started our process in April of this year. Actually, went to court. The owner failed to show, in which case we routed the file to be presented today at a public hearing for the City Council. Been no improvements, there are no permits to improve. We have a case coming later on the House itself, but the resolution I'm asking for today is to allow us to go into the property and clean it up. Thank you.
Letting close the carpet.
What is the pleasure of the Council?
Move to abate.
Second.
Okay. Is there any discussion?
Yes, you can see by the pictures there, that's an eyesore in District 6, and they've just like dumped their garbage or whatever they could find, like they just dumped it all in the yard, and people, they just want it cleaned up. I get calls every day about this piece of property.
You told me about the tents.
I figured y'all seen the tents in the back in the pictures.
Excited.
Pitch tents back there. It's just stuff you can't do in C. D. S. like this.
All right.
Good memory, Ms. Toles.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Item 19 is a resolution authorizing agreement with Lawson Coleman Group. This is for the city to sponsor a southeastern team series fishing tournament to be held April 9th, 2016, and the amount is $2,000. The Chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
I move to adopt.
Second.
Okay. Is there any discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Item number 20 is a resolution authorizing agreement with Lawson Coleman Group. This is for the city to sponsor a women's pro tour fishing tournament to be held June 25th through 26th, 2016, and the amount is $1,500. The Chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
So moved.
Okay. Is there any discussion?
This is coming through Parks and Recreation, and it's also basically a good business for the city. So this is tournaments, this is people coming in to our city that are using our waterways, so it's a good benefit for our city.
Okay. All right. Is there any additional discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Item number 21 is a resolution authorizing agreement with Andy Harp of Frio Pops. This is for lease of the concession stand at Nakalua Falls from March 1st through December 31st, 2016. The lease amount will be $400 per month from March through October, no rent for November, and $200 for December. The Chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
Mr. President, I'd like to ask for a 14-day table on this, please.
Second.
Okay. Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, to table the resolution for 14 days, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to table for 14 days.
New business? Is there any new business?
Mr. President, I have one item. This is a request from the Parks and Recreation Department, and I ask for unanimous consent for adoption, having to do with Academy Sports and Outdoors for advertising, for sponsorship in return for advertising.
Okay. We have a motion to consider. Do we have a second?
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, to consider the resolution today as an item of new business, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, consent has been granted. I move for adoption.
Second.
Okay. Is there any discussion?
Basically, what it's about is that we're doing a sponsorship, but in turn, they're doing advertisement for the city, and I believe that a lot of teams, coaches use Academy Sports and Outdoors. So this is good for advertising for the city.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Is there any more new business? Department reports, committees, boards, Kay Moore?
Thank you, Council and President Williams. I appreciate that. I'm Kay Moore, Director for Downtown Gadsden, and I'm excited. I don't know if you've been downtown lately. It is beautiful. It's nice that Christmas decorations are. We've had a busy time the last few weeks. Couple of weekends ago, we had Christmas Open House. We had Santa and the Clydesdale horses, and then last weekend was Small Business Saturday. So this is a lot of good things for our merchants. For the month of December, and some of them have actually already started, you know, our downtown merchants are not open on Sundays, but for the month of December, for Christmas time, we have 10 merchants that have decided they're going to stay open probably from 1 to 5-ish, depending, but just want to kind of let you know who those are. It's Affordable Computers and Antiques, Blooms on Broad, Boho Chic, Gadsden Variety Antique Mall, Gyra's Boutique, King's Olive Oil, The Shoe Sanctuary, The Sparrow's Nest, Taming of the U, and The Toy Exchange. So they'll all be open in addition to the restaurants that we have that are open on Sunday already. So after church, if you want to go out to eat and then do a little Christmas shopping, it's a great time to go. I promise you, you won't have to fight the crowds, as you will if you go other places. But it's going to be a good time, and I think they're excited about it, so I hope you'll get out and support, support our downtown merchants as they try this. This is kind of something new, so it's going to be good. We're going to see what happens. But this Friday, of course, is the last first Friday of 2015, December 4th, and we call it the North Pole Stroll. We invite everyone to get your Christmas garb out, if you want to dress as Santa Claus, Mrs. Claus, and Elf. I've been a Christmas tree. It's been a lot of different things, but we're inviting anybody who wants to dress up and make the stroll. We're going to meet at the Pittman Theater at 5:00. Hopefully start our walk down Broad Street. If we have a lot of Santas, my vision is to have a photo made in front of, on the steps of the Federal Building. I've been to New York. I've seen that done a lot, and I just think that would be neat. So we'll do that. I'm looking for a photographer. David, are you looking at me? Okay. As long as you're paying attention, I'm okay. But, you know, if we have enough to make that, and I just think that'd be fun, we'll start the stroll about 5:15. The mayor will be on hand to flip the switch for the Christmas tree, and we're just going to have a good time. So the Gadsden State Acapella Choir. So the Gaston State Acapella Choir will be on the lawn of City Hall beginning at 5:00. They'll be singing Christmas carols until we get here, and then, you know, for a few minutes afterward. It's a great opportunity for Christmas photos with a tree, because that tree is absolutely beautiful. The kids love it, so we have a good time. Then we'll release everybody back onto Broad Street, and then you can eat and shop, and at 7:30, the Gaston State Show Band will be playing a Christmas concert at the Pittman. So we're excited from 7:30 to 9:00. We'll have a lot of entertainment, we'll have just our music in the streets, we won't have any live entertainment out, but the weather's supposed to be not rainy, it's going to be nice and cool in the low 30s that morning, and I think in high in the mid 50s. So finally, some Christmas weather. It's kind of warm in here today, I know, if y'all, y'all think the same thing, but we invite everybody to come downtown and shop and eat and just enjoy, just enjoy our downtown. Week after week after week, we have compliments on our downtown, so thank you for your support. Y'all are what makes it happen. Public Works is really, I've been to other cities and realized what they do for us that other cities don't have. The chief has really stepped up our presence of police officers downtown. We feel like our downtown is very safe. So come on down and enjoy, and just relax and have fun. Thank you.
Thank you, Kay. Heath?
Well, thank you, Mr. President. I just wanted to give the public notice, we do have an actual starting date estimated, preliminary starting date for South 11th Street Bridge Replacement Project. That is scheduled to start on December 21st. As of right now, the detour will be installed on that day, so all the ramifications of that. If there are questions with that route, my department is currently making some flyers that we can hand out, or if you have questions, just want to see it or talk through it, I'll be available for that, so if anybody has any questions. Otherwise, we'll look for the December 21st start date. That road will be shut down and detour installed. Thank you.
I have a question. I mean, we wait all year, and then we close at December, but that's, I know you can't answer it, but, but I mean, it just seems strange. Yeah, with the state of Alabama, yeah.
The actual construction of the bridge will begin December 4th, but there's preliminary work with utilities that has to be completed, so they're going to take advantage of that downtime as well. Go ahead and get the detour installed while the schools are out. That's the investment. But yes, I agree, it's not the best plan.
Santa Claus might get hung up down there.
Santa Claus can fly over there, so we'll be all right.
Thank you, Senator.
All right, thank you, Heath. Remarks by the mayor and council. Councilman Reed?
I don't believe I can add anything to Santa Claus flying over that bridge. No, no, I don't have a thing.
All right, Councilman Cannon?
I do want to announce that Santa Claus, if he fly, before he flies over that, he'll be at the gazebo in Alabama City, the 18th and 19th, which will be Friday and Saturday from 6:00 to 8:00, and we're just going to do it two days this year. That's all we can get Santa Claus, he's really busy this year, and he said those two days is all he could come for us. But we'll take advantage of that, come out and enjoy the hot chocolate and the cookies they have, all the little candies, make your picture with Santa Claus. Can't wait to see all the little ones. So, yeah.
Councilman Billingsley?
Yes, I have a couple of things. Right before I came to a council meeting today, I got a call from Mrs. Guiden, who works in the kitchen at Convention Hall on Thanksgiving Day, and she wanted to express her thanks and appreciation to the mayor and the council for getting the kitchen together. It worked out great, and I went back there and looked at it, I mean, it was amazing, and they were very, very appreciative of it. And I think the last word they had was over 5,000 meals served, and some of the council people were there, Councilman Williams and Councilman.
Worthy.
We were, we were all there, and it was just a festival occasion, and lots and lots of people there. Also, Carver will have its annual parade this Saturday. I think it's at 4:00, but I'm not sure, but anyway.
5:00. 5:00 PM, so they changed the time.
Yeah, okay. So if you can, go out to the parade and help the community. I will have a council meeting at Banks Park on Monday from 5:00 to 6:00, and that's it.
Councilman Worthy?
I'll have it at the.
Mr. Eccles? Dr. Toad? Mayor?
Yes, I got something. You know, we had the I-759, we've been working on that for a couple of years, and they finally did a study, and what we said happened to be true, they had the highway director and the engineer did the study up here. If we finish 759, that would save millions of dollars, so they won't have to widen a lot of other streets. But that doesn't mean we're going to get any money. You know, I've spoken before about the Northern Beltline. It's going to cost $5.4 billion. That's twice the amount of money adjusted for inflation on the Apollo mission that first put astronauts on the moon. It also, coming back down to earth, it would buy enough gas to fill up every car in the state of Alabama every week for the next two years. And the people who benefit from that goes from Atlanta to Nashville. There's environmental issues, I think there's a suit against it. A lot of people don't know, the governor has total control over the highway money, so if you plan to have a project finished in 2023, every time you get a new governor, the five-year plan changes. We had that in '96 when we were four-laning 411 to Leesburg and Center, and a new governor got in, and there was a four-by-eight plywood sign that used to be there where it stopped, said, "Fob James, your tax dollars at work," and it's just now about completed 19 years later. So, you know, I don't know what it takes to get any money down there. We just get no service, and I don't know, you know, they say, "Well, you're not going to get any now, well, we're not going to get it anyway," so, but I'd just like for everybody to know, you got the four biggest employers over there, it's a straight shot. We could be getting like 10 million, let's get the next phase started, might be a year or two, 10 more. We could get that thing done in a couple of years, three or four years. But we have to have somebody in Montgomery who knows how to get some money, and it seems like the governor has forgot us up here, so that's all I got to say.
Okay, thank you, Mayor. All right, is there anything else really good of the council and the city? All right, entertain a motion that we adjourn.